All right.
I think we are ready to go. So we've already, we've left executive session, so the meeting is currently in progress. So our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I'm not willing to.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the five United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So my concern is that we're in a practice session.
I'm good.
And it started.
Recording in progress.
Okay, great. So our second order of business is roll call. John?
Here.
Matt?
Present.
Chip?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Councillor Smith is joining us on Zoom.
Present.
Great, and Councillor Benoit is also present. All right, so our third order of business is to waive the reading and accept as printed the meeting minutes for January 7th, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? And we have to roll call? Yes. Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote, so we'll start with John.
Yes.
Matt?
Aye.
Chip?
Yes.
Dan?
Yep.
Steve?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Joanna? So we will move on to our fourth order of business, which is announcements. So stay informed by signing up for town updates. Please visit FreeportMaine.com to subscribe to receive meeting agendas, calendar events, general alerts, closures, updates, and the monthly municipal bulletin via email or text. The state of Maine has amended the Maine Uniform Building and Energy Code adoption. On Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, the Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety signed the amendments into rule. Municipalities must enforce the newly adopted 2021 I codes and corresponding standards as of April 7th, 2025. The Fire Marshal's Office, Division of Building Codes websites, information, and links will be updated in the coming weeks. Please notify your committees, communities, and other constituents of the adoption. And that is us doing just that. Heather Shirley, who has been part-time at the library since 2018, has recently been promoted to a full-time Assistant Librarian position in Youth Services. Also, FCL is hiring. They have two part-time circulation clerk positions open. 2024 dog licenses have expired. A $25 per dog late fee starts on February 1st. You must bring a copy of the dog's rabies certificate this year. Online dog licensing is still available at Maine.gov, but please note the fee for this service has increased this year. The short-term rental registration renewal period is now open. Registration forms are available on our website. There is also a link to pay the $100 renewal fee online. Okay. Our fifth order of business is information exchange, just to share information from the community, discussions with constituents, any other information councillors may wish to share. Is there anything up on the dais folks would like to share today? Okay. I have a few. So as of February 3rd, we will be starting our Coffee with Councillor Leadership series. So on the first Monday morning of the month, at from 8:00 to 9:30, I believe, is the time, myself and/or Eric Smith, the Vice Chair, will be here at Town Hall to just casually talk about concerns, issues, questions you may have. So the first one is on February 3rd. We received notice that the Wood Bank is now open at the transfer station, so that is very exciting. That is a free resource for folks who are interested in wood for their heating needs. Also, on January 30th, Council and Sewer Board will be holding a joint meeting at Meeting House Arts at 6:00 PM. Yes. Great.
What's the date?
January 30th.
30th.
At 6:00 PM. Okay. And so we will move on to our sixth order of business, the Town Manager's Report.
So I just want to remind everybody that on the 28th, which is next Tuesday, we, Council has its first workshop with Council Committees. So just want to remind you of that, so we get a good showing at that at 6 o'clock. You are, you stole my thunder with the Sewer Board. Want to just let you know that we received notification from the police benevolent, Freeport Police Benevolent Association, that they would in fact like to renew their collective bargaining agreement. So staff, I've been starting to work with staff to prepare for that and would expect on February 4th to be an evening that we would have an executive session at the end of our meeting to kind of talk about priorities so that I can get my bargaining authority from, from Council. I was really excited to see department heads, led by our fearless Assistant Town Manager, went and opened up a conversation with RSU-5 around being able to use RSU-5 facilities potentially for an emergency shelter and what that might take and how we might be able to do that. So that was really good. MDOT, we've been working with MDOT on a few different projects. The, the big one that we're in the home stretch with is finalizing the Planning Partnership Initiative scope of work, which they have accepted all of the requests of the Town Council, so I was very excited by that and will be able to begin that work. My intent is to keep Council in the loop with that, but to use the Complete Streets Committee as our primary stakeholder group to kind of vet things as they come up, so that we have a wide variety of people involved. I will tell you, been fielding a couple of emails around people not quite sure how and when we call in our Public Works Team for winter storm events. And I just want to clarify for folks that Freeport is a unique community in that it can be doing absolutely nothing in one section of town and be snowing at a rapid clip someplace else in town, or icy. The Police Department is patrolling 24 hours a day, and so they've gone to, they've done work with Earl to understand when he would want the team to be able to come in, to treat the roads, to respond, to get them clear as fast as we can. It's not just about people who want to get out of their homes, it's also about people who drive through Freeport to get other places. So I've been pretty happy with their discretion to date, and our ability to stay on top of it helps us not have things gets ice build up and get stuck to the roads, which is dangerous. So if people do have questions like that, that's why I have an email, you're welcome to, to send it to me and I'll give you my best answer, but I did want to address that. Last time we spoke, I had to give Council the news that we had an awesome candidate for the Community Response Position who ultimately decided that she still had lots to do in her current position and elected not to follow through. We've, we're going back to the drawing board because other applicants seem to be very community paramedic focused as opposed to that mix of the medical plus the mental health. And so at this point, my plan would be to add this person as an hourly professional working with our Alternative Response Program, so creating a team with Glenn. They would be responsible for the direct case management and client interaction for General Assistance and other programs that we would help connect people with. I really want to keep Glenn out of General Assistance because we find having that clear separation is very helpful, to have somebody who can be, can translate but not be part of, in their words, the, the program. So the hope is that over the next week and a half, we're going to retool, the job description should be wider open. We're looking for somebody with crisis intervention background and case management skills. We have, having seen the applicants for other positions or heard from other towns, I do think that this will, will be a more accessible position, not quite looking for quite the unicorn we were before, but it would have been such a great unicorn. And kind of move forward with the idea of being able to respond. I would keep the Deputy Clerk, I would pass my title of General Assistance Administrator. Be so hard to let it go, but I would pass that on to our Deputy Town Clerk, who's doing an amazing job with it. I think it's important that there be a connection at Town Hall because there is a connection with finance that I think we lost when we sent, when we had FCS do the work. Just, I, I think that that reporting mechanism is really important for us to maintain here. So that's that position. And the last is, I wanted to talk about silver bullets for just a minute, and I've been cautioned, I understand that that's loaded in so many ways, but right now, the town is able to maintain those silver bullets as recycling vessels. So as long as what goes into them is recyclable and what, nothing is laid on the ground outside of them, we're okay. If we get things that people dropping off items that are more solid waste or not recyclable, that creates a permitting problem for us, because then it becomes a transfer station, and as a transfer site, there is a whole host of permitting that is required and security around the site that is required. So I would, I would just invite people, I think we're going to have Pete do a little bit of outreach with regard to the silver bullets. I think a lot of people see them as very valuable and the way that they're able to recycle, but if we have them way overflowing out into the, onto the ground and we have contaminated loads, we're not going to be able to continue the program as it's currently conceived. Yes?
I believe the last time that Council tackled this particular topic, we were getting some sort of feedback reports of percentage of contamination from ECOMaine. They were able to give us roughly either by weight or by volume estimate of the contamination, and that was the spark, because if a certain percentage goes over a threshold, the entire container is no longer recycled and becomes a tipping fee at a different rate, and it was costing the town, the town's already paying all of those fees, and it was adding dramatically to our solid waste disposal. But I haven't seen those in a while, so I was assuming no news is good news, maybe that contamination was way down or certainly under the threshold, but if that's coming back up again, I know there was a couple of volunteer groups, as well as the Town Committee, that were specifically focused on the education part of that and getting the word out so that we could all continue to enjoy them, but if, if that's not happening, we, we got to gear up again because.
So I, I think in many ways, it's not as bad as it was before, so part of what I want to do is try to get the word out fast. And we are not having loads rejected. My understanding is there were loads rejected in the past, but what they're not seeing is the trash that's being left outside of them, which is what is really concerning me.
Yeah. I, I know that the, the community-based containers are often full, maybe it's my daily patterns and what the day of the week that I go there, that they're full. So I'm always at the transfer station on Saturday because that one is always available. So that may be part of what is causing the bags left on the side, is that the container is full and people are frustrated, and so they leave other things, I have no idea.
Yep.
But, but that's really good information.
The other part of that is that when they go down there, it's by weight, and because it's not compacted, it's usually half-full. And if it's full every day of the week, they have to come and make more trips, which we pay for, so there's a cost analysis that probably should be looked at again, too.
I think this is probably part of a bigger conversation that I would like to have Rod Reger here for.
Yeah.
Around where we're headed with recycling costs at ECOMaine and, and kind of what is kind of ahead of us in terms of the budget for the coming year.
Any further questions for Sophie? Okay. Thank you. So we will move on to our seventh order of business, Part One. This is public comment in person, limited to comments on items that are not on the agenda. We ask for folks to speak for no more than three minutes. I also did want to share, we have a lot of folks who come up and share thoughts, and I do want to give Sophie credit for often following up with individuals who do give public comment, and so if folks do want follow-up, make sure we have your information so we can, with information. So yes, public comments open if anyone would like to, to speak. Go for it. And just make sure to introduce yourself and where you live.
Hello. My name's Lee Chisholm. I live on the Hunter Road in Freeport. It's the house that my deceased wife, Suki Rice, and I bought back in 1980. We raised a family there. I'm here tonight because I want to acknowledge both a recurrent presence in Freeport of a large banner and the remarkable tenacity of a small group of people, frequently a single individual, who could be seen standing under that banner near LL Bean on an almost weekly basis. The banner reads, "Protect Mother Earth." Its maker is Freeport resident and former Town Council member, Bill Rickson. Bill and the others who stand out with him belong to Third Act Maine, an organization of older citizen statesmen, or elders, men and women in their 60s, 70s, 80s, and beyond, who've dedicated themselves to opposing the financing and development of new fossil fuel infrastructure. What does Beans have to do with new fossil fuel infrastructure? It's a reasonable question, but the answer is that LL Bean is co-branding its credit card with the largest financer of new fossil fuel infrastructure in the world today, Citibank. Since the 2015 Paris Climate Accord, which established an aspirational goal of not exceeding a temperature average of 1.5 degrees centigrade above pre-industrial levels, Citibank has poured hundreds of billions of dollars, more than 396 billion, I read, into the expansion of coal, oil, and natural gas operations worldwide. In this past year, 2024, the world surpassed, for the first time, the Paris Climate Accord's 1.5-degree benchmark. Third Act Maine is asking Beans and to ask Citibank, asking Beans to ask Citibank to stop financing fossil fuel expansion, and if it refuses, to simply find a better, more conscientious bank. It seems like a reasonable request to me. Now, I know that by presidential executive order, we left the Paris Climate Accord yesterday. That's in part why I wish to acknowledge the quiet tenacity, the resolute bearing witness of Third Act Maine, which is not ceasing to make that simple request. As I stand here tonight, the city of Los Angeles is burning still, and those fires cannot be put out by a bucket brigade of gasoline.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks who would like to speak for public comment? Okay, we will move on. Our eighth order of business is to take action on the following items. We have our consent agenda here, so this is item 09-25. What we see today on the consent agenda is mostly donations to the library, and I think that is it. Any discussion? Okay. John, will you read the be ordered?
Be ordered that the January 14th, 2025 consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
I think today's the 21st.
Yes.
It is the 21st. What do we need to do officially?
Just acknowledge that it's the 21st and we'll change it.
All right, today is the 21st, so we acknowledge that today is in fact the 21st and not the 14th.
It was the 14th.
Just for the record, I'm following the rules because you asked me to read what's there, so.
That's true.
Unusual that I'm such a stickler for the rules.
All right, do we have a second for that?
Yes.
Okay, Chip. All right, and so we have to do.
Recognizing that it is the 21st.
The 21st, just to say it a few more times to make sure. And we'll do a roll call vote, so John?
Yes.
Matt?
Aye.
Yep.
Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, so now we are moving on to item 10-25. This is a public hearing, so we will go ahead and we'll open the public hearing, and we'll pass it over to Caroline to give us background.
And Tom, you're going to give this to the screen?
Can you plug in?
Nope. Nope. Miss one plug. My bad.
And just for the record, this is a public hearing to consider action relative to amendments to Chapter 21 Freeport zoning ordinance.
Okay, so can you talk to what that's, the last meeting?
Yes.
Because I was not in the room, so. I need to tell them I'm muted tonight. So this project is a assortment of multiple planning department and planning board projects that have been identified.
One quick question, too, this, we know this heavily relates to the next public hearing as well, so is this going to be a presentation for?
Oh, yes, sorry. Same, yep, same as last month.
Okay.
Presenting all the changes to the zoning and subdivision because they are very strongly related.
Great, thank you.
So a couple of different projects here, we're always doing general cleanup to ordinances, so titles, references, things like that, gender neutrality. This also includes changes to exempt certain multiple-family dwellings from subdivision review, so that they'd only go through site plan review. Changes reflect the change of the Project Review Board from an all-paper board to be our first all-digital board. We still have to get a few paper copies because we do have, public that likes to come in and look at paper, and we have legal retention requirements, but the board will be functioning fully digital. We have some legal cleanup to the subdivision ordinance. There is quite a bit of cleanup to that ordinance, you're going to see this back again, but this is a, a first attempt at some cleanup throughout. And then it was commented to the planning board by a member of the public that the subdivision ordinance definitions did not match the shoreline zoning definitions in some cases when we created that new ordinance. So in cases where those needed to be cleaned up or omitted, those changes were included in this. So the text changes again, general cleanup, for example, we no longer have a town engineer, so we've fixed that. We're going to reduce the PRB, Project Review Board, copies from 12 down to 3. That gives us a working copy, one for the public, and then two for retention. And then we had to switch some stuff, like our ordinance references, MYLARS, which are like these vellum paper that plans used to be signed and recorded, but the registry has also modernized, so we don't need those anymore. Legal cleanup was at the guidance from the town attorney. Like I said, there'll be more of this in the future. And then the shoreline zoning definitions, not the intent to change them, just to match what we already have on the books in another ordinance. Probably the most significant change here would be the change that would allow multiple-family dwelling to be exempt from subdivision review, and so this would apply most commonly when we've had apartment buildings come in, they've had to go through subdivision and site plan. Subdivision is a slightly different process, depending on different factors, but it can add time and also additional submission materials and review threshold. So the intent of this will allow for a shortened and more streamlined, reduced process, and then reduce duplication. So with regards to this finding, state law allows municipalities, their municipal reviewing authority, in the case of Freeport, the municipal reviewing authority is the Project Review Board. So although this is an ordinance project, which in Freeport falls under the planning board, the planning board talked about it, we had to then jump it over to the Project Review Board to make the finding that we have standards in place that address the four criteria under a law, which is stormwater management, sewage disposal, water supply, and vehicular access. You can have more standards, which obviously we do, but they had to make a finding on those four. So they talked about those four, and they talked about what appropriate finding would be. Then went back to the planning board to work on language. The Project Review Board did have an opportunity to weigh in, and we kind of took the comments from both boards, which I'll present to you on the next slide. So we do have a little bit of flexibility as to making a determination as to when this should and shouldn't apply. So in the case here, this would apply to a multi-family dwelling only when it's in a single structure. So if you come in and you have two separate multiple-family dwellings, you're still going to go through subdivision review and site plan review. Our guidance was you can do one, you can do multiple, but don't pick a number based upon the standards we have on the books today, and probably needing to update some of those, the decision was made, this would apply to a single structure. And then it would also apply to a structure where no new road is being created, so no public or private road. So for example, if our law was vacant, a single multiple-family dwelling was to go on here, three or more units in one structure, they don't need a new road, they could now just go through the site plan review, which would be the shortened and condensed process. By eliminating subdivision review, there were a couple of things that the planning board felt like we should add into site plan review, because they seemed like standards that would now be missing. So though, that was a standard for demonstrating financial and technical capacity, usually that's kind of like a letter of good standing from a bank, and then of course, technical capacity will often see these plans stamped by a surveyor or professional engineer. And then they also added a requirement for any site plan review application that's proposing a multiple-family dwelling, that they have a public hearing, because right now, site plan, the public hearing is optional. The Project Review Board, per their rules and policies, always takes public comment, but that public hearing is an extra notice in the paper, just like you guys do. And then, you know, the formality, more of opening, closing it. The only thing we want to note here is that they kind of integrated this into the ordinance, they didn't get into changing densities like land per dwelling unit, minimum lot size. We do know that sometimes inside and outside of subdivision have a little bit different densities, without having all the land analysis of all these parcels, it's, it's hard to understand that full impact. I think the biggest switch might be kind of on the perimeters of the village where we haven't really seen a lot of subdivision anyways, but again, just wanted to note that because they wouldn't go through like the same density calculations like they do today. And happy to answer questions that you guys have.
The public hearing that is now being required, can you talk a little bit about that discussion and how that came to be?
I think where it was just option, where it's optional now, subdivision always requires it, the planning board just decided they wanted to make it required to make sure the public had the opportunity formally to comment and kind of the maximum notice that we do. I mean, they have a butter notification, which, so it wouldn't change the 500 feet, you know, within the parcel, but it would increase that add in the paper. They felt like it was an important thing to carry over.
Are there mandatory public hearings in non-residential commercial permits?
For site plan review, they are optional. That being said, a lot of the site plan applications, the Project Review Board sees, like if a new project on Main Street, if a new big building came in, it would trigger a public hearing under design review. So although the site plan ordinance, when you have things that need multiple- So although the site plan ordinance, when you have things that need multiple reviews, sometimes it's triggered by something else, but not site plan standalone.
That seems potentially a little bit out of balance, that commercial development doesn't require a public hearing and residential multifamily development does.
Yeah, I would say we tend to fill the room with multifamily, with residential development projects.
Yeah.
You know, the site plans are often in commercially zoned areas with less neighbors, less housing. It seems like it brings less people, but you're right, it isn't something you could come and put a commercial, still a commercial building on Route 1 South, and if you only needed site plan review, although they would take public comment, it wouldn't require a public hearing. But again, the really only difference is the legal ad in the paper. We still post it, everyone's the same.
Well, and an opportunity to mobilize if you're not in favor of that particular multifamily project.
Yeah, I think, I'm kind of, I'm curious about the same things, too, John, if, I'm wary of adding any more potential barriers to this kind of development. Because on one hand, I do see that it can add the opportunity to like target sort of feedback.
Because the subdivision, as it stands now, requires a public hearing, so it's not, it's not added, it's just not reducing it very much.
Yep.
I think it's something you could look at here, and if it's something, if you wanted to revisit further, you could look at rules of policy. I believe that, it might be in the ordinance, I know it's in the rules of policy and order, probably just like the council, that they always take public comment. So, I mean, it could really go either way, but I think if it's something you have concerns about, you might want to look at the whole package at some point and what you think is appropriate for Freeport. Again, like John said, subdivision legally were required to have a public hearing in a certain point. Here, this would be a municipal requirement that you're choosing to put in. I wasn't there for every single conversation they had on this, I'm just kind of getting it through the finish line because it's been a priority project. But, you know, personally, it's not something I feel strongly on. I feel like people aren't reading the paper probably like they used to, but like John said, I do think you're right. I think it does give people the opportunity or the encouragement to mobilize if they feel like it's the formal public hearing.
I think that we should keep that in there, only to be totally open, but I'm all for reducing requirements, but this is something, you know, if you have a big development going on just down the street from you, you might want to have something to say about that, so.
So you also, reminder, you did, we do have the conditional grant, we're still waiting for the wording, but we are gonna be taking another look at Section 602. So like any ordinance, I mean, it has a process, but I do think it's something you could also revisit or see how it was effective or ineffective between now and when changes come back to you. I think we're good. That's all I have for you.
Oh, that's it?
All right, any other questions for Caroline? Oh, I guess the public hearing is open if anyone would like to speak from the public. Just keeping a lookout online as well.
Zero.
Okay.
Not to.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then, councilors, any discussion, further questions for Caroline? Okay. Matt, will you please read the be ordained?
Sure. Be it ordained that proposed amendments to the Freeport zoning ordinance regarding exempting multifamily structures from subdivision review per Title 30-A MRS, Section 4402, Section 6, clarifying density standards in the commercial 4, C4 district, updating site plan review submission and criteria standards, non-substantive text amendments related to updating nomenclatures and updating quantities of project review board submission materials be adopted.
Second.
Okay, and we will do a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
All right, Matt?
Aye.
Chip?
Yep.
Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Joanna, I vote yes as well. Going along to item 11-25, this is also a public hearing, very much related. Do you have anything you'd like to add with this one, or?
Nobody covered it in the first one, but again, happy to answer questions pertaining to this ordinance if you have them.
Do you have a?
Are you putting them back up?
Oh, we're missing Eric suddenly. He's gone, we just can't see him. Okay, good. All right, so we will open the public hearing. This is about the piece of the amendments relative to Chapter 25 Freeport subdivision ordinance. Are there any public comments? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Any discussion up here? Okay, Chip, will you please read the be it ordained?
Sure. Now, do you want to close the public hearing?
I do, I do want to close public hearing, thank you. Public hearing is closed.
Cool. All right. Be it ordained that the amendments to the Freeport subdivision ordinance regarding exempting multifamily structures from subdivision review per Title 30-A MRS, Section 4402, Section 6, sub, non-substantive text amendments such as updating reference documents, updating definitions, updating amendments per the town attorney, recommendation for clarification of ordinance language, and ease of review, and updating quantities of project review board submission materials be adopted.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we will roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Matt?
Aye.
Chip?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay. Aida?
Thanks, Caroline.
Yes, thank you very much for that, for doing that presentation twice. Thank you. Moving on to item 12-25, to consider action relative to a beautification project at Town Hall. Dan, I believe I am to you, if you'll read the be ordered.
Be it ordered that the town manager be authorized to submit an application to the Freeport Project Review Board for a Town Hall beautification project.
Second.
So if you would like to introduce this?
So I wanted to just share with you, before I arrived in Freeport, there was this planned beautification for out front of Town Hall.
Turn my gun.
As part of the downtown vision planning, the one, the map that's up right now is of the initial drawing that went through the project review board and was permitted. That permitting expired, I think, before I arrived, and it now needs to be repermitted. Looking at this, the budget currently is $125,000 with a $50,000 grant, so it's total 125. There was an expenditure made prior to my arrival for granite that we've had some issues actually securing that. And when we looked at what was here with our engineering support professional, Albert Pressgraves, what we figured out pretty quickly is that this is beautiful, but to build it, we would probably almost double the budget. So my direction to Albert and Earl, our public works director, was can you go back and look back at the plan, remember the planning process, look at what current conditions are, and see what we could do for beautification that fit within our budget? Which is leading us to this. So again, we're really focusing on what's in front of Town Hall. The first thing you'll notice, I don't know how well my little, oh, here's the arrow. The first thing you notice is over here at the crosswalk to enter the Town Hall parking, we would be adding some accessible, detectable inserts to the sidewalk to make that a safer crossing. We, instead of shifting and putting so much pavement down, looking at trying to recycle what we have, but try to still get the feel. So to do that, one of the things, as you come down the sidewalk along the driveway to Town Hall, we would be looking to increase the width and the radius on the sidewalk that would take you to the side entrance, which I think we all use as the front, the main entrance. Earl would overlay the existing sidewalk. We would, at the end of the current sidewalk, kind of create this still circular patio in the middle with a way down to the existing stairs onto Grove Street, and then on the side, go directly and set up the big stairs that are there right now. We would go to kind of where the intersection of Main and Grove are. These, kind of a circular seating arrangement with granite, instead of one contiguous, it's pieces, we're actually repurposing them from the area in the woods kind of behind Town Hall. And the other big issue would be the front porch, which needs significant work, and a front door, which would be, both doors, sets of doors would be changed. But we would be getting rid of stairs, so this would become universally accessible, meaning that it's just a, it's a ramp from the circle up with very limited slopes. The dark circles here that you see are four new trees. Two of them are Elms, Princeton Elms, and one is a Dogwood, and two are Dogwoods, the smaller ones are Dogwoods. This box right here would allow for a bus shelter, should we decide to do that in the future. So this plan went in front of the municipal facilities committee and got, I would say, it's strong support, a recommendation for the council to move ahead. It is not a super, it's not as grand as it was before. Albert is working with a lighting specialist to help design, but the lights, the intent would be to have enough lights to be safe, but not to create like overlighting here, and to use as much of the same infrastructure as we currently have, changing to LED or newer technology LED, yeah.
Downward pointing.
Downward pointing. So that's what we have, and if council is in agreement, the next step would be for us to move this to the project review board in hopes of getting things organized for Earl's team to do the site work and electricians to come in and do. We've got some skilled profession, you know, licensed professionals coming in to do some stuff, yes.
So I think you sort of answered my first question, which was where, where and what type of lighting would there be? So I'm glad to see that that's a thoughtful part of the plan. Second, which I really should have started with, which is, this is lovely, I think it's great. Do we know what the elevation of the prominent ingredient here, which, or the feature, which is the circle? Do we know what elevation that is? Is that on the plan? I just can't read type that.
I don't have, it is, it has the diameter, and if I was more skilled, I probably could read. Let's just do this.
The reason I'm asking is because I'm curious about how we deal with slope between the primary feature, the sidewalk, and the sidewalk on Main Street and the driveway. In other words, are we creating essentially a swimming pool?
So-
In that depression? And is that gonna still be mowed grass, or is it stone, or just, it seems like?
So the plan, I know that Albert brought that down significantly from what it was in the original plan. It was significantly higher in the original plan, that the intent is for everything that is not otherwise denoted as being paved in here to be grass.
Okay.
What you see beside the kind of circle patio is this bio-retention-
Pond, yeah.
That we call it a pond, I'm being, Albert says that's technical, it's really just a depression with flowers in it, but-
Rain garden.
Like a rain garden. He is not anticipating significant water on the site, given he's been in there to look at the storm drain system that's underground, and he feels like we have adequate drainage on the site.
Great, thank you.
And I think you said it's only gonna be as high enough as it needs to, to make that ramp ADA compliant.
Yep. And the level off the front of Town Hall.
Yep. So it's not a lot, if there's any height.
So in the original plan, that ramp to Town Hall had granite retaining walls built into it, so it was, it was a steep drop. Now, it is level and it's sloped out to the side so that it truly, it's, it should look more like a natural kind of feature.
Yep, great.
What would be the timeline for this, do you think?
So you and I talked about me and giving timelines, right?
I'm still going to ask.
Yeah. I think the plan is if we can get this in front of the project review board for its March meeting, because we would meet the February submittal deadline, that Earl would be able to do the lion's share of the site work with public works people, and we would have somebody who has, who is skilled and has a lot of experience laying the pavers to do that, and also the electrical work to come in. But we think it's doable for this, for this construction season. I would love to say that we could have it, oh, Earl's telling me right now to stop and just say late fall.
All right, heard, Earl. I'll even cross it out on my notes.
Yep.
Yes. It's great, you guys get the best information.
And no worries, if it doesn't, I just, it's just nice, no general thoughts on timeline.
Questions? In the old plan, we had a bike rack, and I don't see that in the new plan.
It's still in the same place.
Yeah, it, so in the old plan, the way the new side, the additional sidewalks were working, yeah, the intent is to put it right back in this area over here.
Okay, so it's still there, is it not?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And then the porch in front of Town Hall is not clear to me, is that staying and being rebuilt more or less as is with the sort of traditional look and feel, just with new material?
Yeah, so I think our intent would be, we have not dangerous, but definitely older wood, and it needs to be refreshed. The doors, the door to Town Hall in the front is not an accessible door, and none of the two doors that we have actually keep the cold weather out, which we think is kind of important. So we're gonna be looking and seeking some guidance from the town planner about what we can reasonably do there and not break our own rules.
For design and preservation stuff, yeah, okay. Is there any options, might be a wish list item, but in that central area where we now have seating, and we're doing electrical work, is there any option to add some outlets so people can sit there, charge their phones, work on their laptops? An outlet in, I don't know where it would go, like in the granite or something.
So I am not an expert at this, but I know some people who are. And what I will do is tell you that, given the meetings that we see happen out front here, I think that's a great idea, and we would add that to our wish list and see what we could come up with.
There's an outlet on a post there already, but if we could move to the seating area.
Yeah, so I think it's probably do, I think it's probably doable.
Great. The, so we're saving six figures on changing from one plan to another, which is great. Is the granite that expensive? Is that what's saving all the money?
It's low.
Okay. Because there's not a lot that's changed otherwise, other than paving.
So there's a lot of paving.
A lot of paving, yeah.
I think the, the last plan really envisioned digging everything up, going all the way down to the base, changing how certain things were laid to be able to facilitate the pattern, you know, the, this is really more about, what's under here is, is in really good shape. Let's reuse what we have. And also, let's keep as much grass and green for a village green or a gathering spot as we possibly can.
So if the granite's not that expensive, and I know this is a little controversial, but is there an option to keep the nicer looking granite? Because these granite blocks are very functional and they're free because we have them, but they're not very pretty.
So I guess what I would say, Dan, is that we can, whatever council wants to fund, we can, we can fund. I think at this point, granite is something we could change out.
Sure.
Later, that if we looked at it and we were like, ooh, this really doesn't meet our need. I don't, for me personal, it's a personal thing. I think all granite's pretty. So I, I do know that the full run, the way it was constructed before was about a hundred, a hundred thousand was the next high bid. I think a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Just, just for the material, just for the.
Just for the granite.
It's all dogwood cut.
Yeah, it was, it was, I mean, I mean, all granite is beautiful, but.
Last question, and I know this was phase two for Down the Road, not really part of the beautification in front of the Town Hall, but we had talked about some electric vehicle chargers in the parking lot, and I know there were issues, and where does that stand?
So we have been conditionally awarded the Efficiency Main Grant for four of them in the parking lot. We looked, some wise individual who likes to travel suggested we look at Grove Street. We did look there. There were some structural issues that they couldn't get around. I, I didn't delve too, too deep. But the four in the parking lot, as soon as that is not conditional and we get on, we have people ready to step in, we have the match all set aside, so it, they'll be there, Level 2s.
It's part, not part of this project, separate.
Separate.
Okay.
And we would be putting them up closest to Main Street, just because of where the John can come for very long meetings and charge.
The, I think we got an email, too, about an Efficiency Main Grant opportunity for a Level 3 charger, which we didn't get last time, but there's a new series coming out, and they've targeted, I think Brunswick, Topson, Freeport has an area that might get a charger. Is that something we're going to pursue?
We are going to pursue it.
Apparently. Okay.
You forwarding it up.
I will make sure that happens. Thanks.
FSAB should be all over that.
There's been a lot, that's not what I've seen come through yet.
Yeah. Okay.
And before we move on, I just really want to thank Earl and Albert for kind of trying to stay within the, the, the initial goal. I think they did a great job.
I'm excited. Any other questions or thoughts for Sophie?
I would just like to add one thing, that my primary issue with this is that we're calling it the Town Hall Beautification. And I think it's really much more functionalization, but I'm not sure that that's a word that we can actually use. But I would just like to echo Sophie's thanks to Earl and Al for, for doing the work to figure out how to actually make the front of the building work for the many purposes that it works for, and particularly focusing on the universal access to the front door, so that when that is active, particularly in the summer season, that we have people that can come off of Main Street and go directly into the front door rather than coming through the parking lot.
I also happen to notice that the area where the pinkies are is pretty, left pretty open. Is that intentional or just?
So I think that's intentional. We're also looking at picnic tables, really liked what Joyce Veyou had picked out, that style of a granite table, whether it be inlaid or, or not, but something that would be accessible. Figure out how we can make that work. But for right now, we're just kind of leaving it as grass.
I'm assuming the work around the pinkies will be fine and?
Of course.
So we can do a roll call vote on this. John?
Yes.
Matt?
Hi.
Chip? Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, so item 13-25, I'll actually take this one because I have the names written down. So we, right before this meeting, we, the Appointments Committee met and considered two applications. Pauline Lavassar for the Police Advisory Board and Jordana Feeley for the Library Board of Trustees. We unanimously voted to appoint them both to their desired committees, so I will read the be ordered. Be ordered that Pauline Lavassar be appointed to the Police Advisory Board and Jordana Feeley be appointed to the Library Board of Trustees for their volunteer committee positions.
Second.
Great. Any thoughts or questions?
Question for Chris. I'm not sure if you know off the top of your head, Chris, do we have any vacancies left on the Police Advisory? We still have one left, so we have four people who are now in the committee?
Thanks.
Which does mean if anybody else is interested, please apply. Any other questions? Okay, we will do our roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Matt?
Hi.
Chip?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, so that brings us to our seventh order of business, which is public comment for items not on the agenda for virtual attendees. Still zero. All right, so we will move along and brings us to other business. So our first item for other business is following up on the goal-setting workshop. So Counselor Smith very graciously typed up our goals and organized them. The next step of action is for our view and then send them over to Sophie for staff input. So we're not as far along as I ambitiously thought we would be, but we are moving along, so. And I just also want to thank you all. That was, I had a great time for a goal-setting workshop. I think that went very well, and it was very engaging, and I believe the goals that we came out with were realistic and achievable, so thank you all for that.
Yeah, appreciate, appreciate the format. I thought that really facilitated the conversation.
Yep. Thank you.
And Caroline, Sue?
The food. Thank you for the food. Thank you for feeding us. All seven of us were there because of the food, so thank you. So hang tight, we'll keep that on other businesses for regular updates, but I would, I would assume that probably next meeting we'll be able to, to review staff input. Other business number two, community barbecue scheduling conflict. So we had on our calendar for May 17th, doing a community barbecue day with counselors. That is also the, the Chambers Boots and Brews 5K, which is, I would say, a very large community event as well. So I would feel like it might be wise for us to consider rescheduling or discussing what we might want to do about that. I know I personally have signed up for the 5K, so I will be running it, hopefully. So if we want to move, move it, reschedule it, what do folks think? Do we have any other proposed dates that we were thinking of or?
Yep. So we, I just want to pull up the calendar. So I think the thought was that you really wanted to try to stay in May if you could because you wanted it warm enough for people to be outside, given weather patterns lately? Who knows? But I, I think we did want to stay away from the Labor Day, Memorial Day weekend, which would be the 24th. So we had tossed around, I think there was something happening on, we thought the 10th might be too early. We landed on the 17th. The other date would be the 31st, if you're looking for a Saturday.
Is there a reason why we kept it in May? Why don't we move it to June? Just, June tends to be a lot warmer weather. And I know after June 15th, usually it's when it, up here, I remember the first year I was up here, June 15th was the day that it was really nice. Summer started, yeah. And it'd been kind of following that pattern. It may change, but.
I think we had, we had concerns that we start losing folks for summer activities around that time, but I think that's just, we, you don't know either way.
Well, June, June is very full of, of graduations and weddings, and it, I think it just starts to get very busy for folks all around town.
Is there, is there a, a full day schedule with the 5K race, Boots to something, what was it called?
Boots and Brews 5K. So it's a 5K and a barbecue.
Oh, okay. So they have a social event after the race?
They do.
I see. So it's not like we could tail on to.
Yeah.
Everybody who's looking for some.
Because they actually do the whole like food meal thing.
Yeah, okay. All right.
It probably goes till like one or two.
Yeah.
Is Sunday an option? Instead of trying to find Saturday?
Is what what?
Sunday? Could we do a Sunday? Maybe not the 18th, but any Sunday, 11th.
Wow.
June 1st.
That's Mother's Day, I believe.
May 18th?
May, May 11th is Mother's Day.
Oh, May 11th, okay.
May 18th would be the day after the Boots and Brews.
Yeah.
We could do the 18th.
And then Memorial Day, and then June 1st.
We could. How do we feel about the 18th?
18th works, works for me.
Okay. Any conflicts?
You'll, you'll be hearing shortly about the upcoming Music in the Park series when Meeting House Arts gets its permit together to go see Chris about reserving Sundays. We're going to move to Sundays in, starting in mid-June, and they're going to be every week.
That, starting in mid-June, so it wouldn't interfere with this event?
Right.
Okay.
Why? Just curious. Why Saturday to Sunday?
It seems to be easier to schedule bands.
Oh, okay.
And there's usually less competition of things going on on Main Street. And, yeah, anyway. So you'll be hearing about that shortly because we had a meeting about it yesterday, so Meeting House Arts will be coming in with a permit request once a week.
Awesome.
Ten of them.
That's great.
So a Saturday night concert and a Sunday, Sunday concert.
Perfect. That's nice.
One of the beans.
Oh, yeah.
True.
Top in place.
And then there's also, well, I guess they do there on Wednesday, Thursday at Winslow.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds like a jazz festival.
That's coming.
So we'll, we'll move forward with the 18th until another conflict pops up, but we'll, hopefully, it'll be a manageable one.
Oh, and I did want to let folks know that Chris has confirmed the.
The district meetings.
Yes. All of the district meetings were using the same locations that we used last time. They, they worked so well that, and everybody was gracious, so.
Did you get my note about not being available on the day you had it scheduled for?
Oh, your microphone.
No.
Oh, boy.
They had it scheduled for me initially, which does not work. I'm not going to be in town.
Okay. Well, we'll go back to the drawing board on that one, we'll figure it out.
All right. Thank you. Hopefully that's the only big conflict, both of them for now. And then the last piece of the agenda for other business is Sophie's evaluation. First and foremost, Courtney Sparks, our HR Director, was incredibly helpful. She knocked it out of the park. I really had to do very little other than review what she proposed and give a little bit, a tiny bit of feedback. So just huge kudos to her for turning that around very quickly and thoughtfully.
Amazing.
Yeah, that was pretty impressive. I just want to confirm that everyone did receive it and understands the timeline to send, ideally electronically, but if that's an issue, let me know. I can meet up at any point. But sending that back to us by the 31st to Eric and I, so we can work on giving it all together. And also at the same time, Sophie's direct reports will be evaluating her, so hopefully we'll have all that feedback ready to go for discussion on or about February 18th. Yeah, go ahead.
Just to clarify, the first section, questions one to 10, are numeric answer only? There's no narrative needed? Or it, it just wasn't entirely clear from the, the instructions?
I think that if you have a narrative feedback you would like to provide, please do. That feels like an important part of it.
Is there, I haven't looked at, is there a notes section in there where you can put a note?
Is there a notes section in there?
I believe there was, right.
That you could put a note, so you, I haven't looked at.
I'm forgetting the last, I don't recall the last version we had sent, so I'm not 100% sure.
It's, there are questions one to 10, and it's rank with numeral, how you agree with the following statements.
And then there's, at the end, there's three or four open-ended questions.
One is a generic, like, describe anything you want to add. But the instructions were a little vague as to what feedback you wanted in which section, so I just wanted to ask.
Yeah. And I'll just, I'll reiterate, yeah, if there's a comment you want to leave on that numerical piece, please write it in. Absolutely. I think that's important context.
Forward could be filled in here in the late two.
Yeah, absolutely.
So one, one minor point, I hate to get into the weeds, but it usually seems to be my job. The, for the numerical ones, there's five attributes, I guess, for each of the categories. And then the instructions say, add the values up, divide by five, and that should be what you put in. I assume we have some latitude there to say like, we feel this attribute's really important, more so than the other four, so it might not be a strict arithmetic division, like, you know?
So.
Weighted average.
So I think.
More guidance rather than.
Just fudge the numbers and make it look.
Do your own weight.
Right on a curve, yeah.
I think at the end of the day, this is an amalgamation of many different evaluation tools, right? This is, we're not a big, huge corporate company where you're determining what my raise might be, right? This, what is most important in my role, I believe, for the evaluation is that we are, it's a tool to spark communication, to ensure that we're all on the same page and that we're moving forward together. And also, it is a way to document, what a rock star, no. It is a way to, to document what's expected and what we're going to work on. And it's, I think, an important piece. It also is, we're turning over that, trying to do it better here, and we've developed an internal tool. And I think it's really important for staff to see me sitting through this process first so that everybody is going through it. And it's, it's not, it's not supposed to be a scary thing. And for me, it really isn't about the number. So a, a 3.2 versus a 3.0 means that I'm meeting expectations. I probably would want to cry if I did that, but that's my personal, you know, striving, which is what you always hope people will do.
And that's why I think the narrative piece is important, so I'm glad you brought that up, Matt, of that's, the, the number only says so much, but if there is a piece that's more important, or you think that's more valuable, write that down. Make sure to note that, so we can share that. Chip?
Are there plans to do this more than once a year? In other words, not necessarily a full-blown one, but one so that Sophie knows, hey, we're doing fine or not, so there's no surprises?
So.
You know what I mean?
In my previous life, we would do the evaluation, and then six months later, we would check in. would check in. If there were issues, either individual councillors or the council chair, I would assume, would be bringing those to me to, to, to correct. But usually there's that opportunity for an executive session to sit down and talk about what's going well and what's, what's not.
Yeah, I was more holding not you, the feet of the fire, but leadership of the fire, that they're doing this more than, or that we are doing it more than once a year, not, not necessarily full blown, but to make sure that you get the information that you need.
Yeah, I think if that ever feels appropriate, that could be, we just schedule an executive session just as a check in on performance.
And then you have a lot of information every, twice a year instead of all, oh, I gotta go back and remember what, what happened in the beginning, that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I mean, I should have blabbered this, but, I mean, then you start talking about really performance evaluations versus goal setting and expectation, like they, they dovetail nicely, but that's really what the six month check in is, is progress toward goals that you've set for that year. And then your full year evaluation is the progress that you made against your goals.
Yep.
So.
And I, you know, I personally, from my experience, I think Sophie does take feedback pretty well, so I welcome anybody to share that at any time, truly.
That's the best.
Yeah. Okay. If any other questions pop up, please let me know. Thank you for being very thoughtful and taking this very seriously. I appreciate it.
So just the other item that went out is a draft or a new draft job description. I don't know that that all has to happen at the exact same time, but the old job description is from when you hired me and now I'm going to suggest that maybe we want to follow some best practice around larger vision type, larger general performance as opposed to tasks.
Yep. All right. Well, that is it for our agenda. We had a very light agenda today and we cruised through it, so.
Make a motion to adj, adjourn?
Second.
Do I have to roll call this?
Technically, yeah.
I agree. Well, roll call, John?
Yeah.
Matt?
Hi.
I need about five minutes to think about this. Go ahead, yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Meeting is adjourned.